Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon, and welcome to your Tuesday, December 11th Sioux Falls City Council informational meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Our first item up is the audit committee meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd update. Go ahead, Counselor.
All right, thank you. We did have a lengthy audit committee meeting last week. It lasted a couple hours. We first had a presentation from Maude Bailey to talk about the external audit for the 2018 calendar year. Their preliminary work has already begun. Next, we talked about some proposed ordinance changes and policy changes that will be coming forward in the near future. We provided a quick update of staffing and internal audit and the proposed timeline for hiring of new staff. Once we hopefully get that ordinance and policy change in place, we hope to start the process of hiring an internal audit manager in the coming weeks. We had four audits presented to us. The first was an audit of Great Bear. The second was a fraud risk assessment, citywide risk assessment, and finally, a financial condition analysis. Those assessments have provided us with guidance of risk going forward, which will drive our audit plans. The financial condition analysis was very interesting. It shows just how strong we are as a city financially. I encourage you all to read that. We received updates of audits in progress. The Great Plains Zoo audit just finished up, and the P Card, also called the Purchasing Card Audit, started last week, and that will roll into 2019. We went over what we had completed in 2018. We talked about the 2019 audit plan, and that is coming to you with the recommendation for approval tonight. And we talked about some other staffing issues. Just as an update, our part-timer, Rich Ochsle, is going to be scaling back a little bit. He'll be done sometime this year in 2019, by May. He's just gonna help us finish things up and get somebody new on staff so we can transition out. And we're just hoping to get that hiring going, but we wanted to get all of those things in place. Plus, we have a resolution tonight that deals with pay scales, which is gonna help us be, if approved, more competitive when we make that offer. So, it was a great meeting. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Any questions for Counselor Nitschard on the update? Seeing none, Counselor Starr, update on the fiscal committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We had a great fiscal committee meeting where we were able to meet. The discussion was led by the city's, the mayor's chief of staff, Erica Beck, to discuss grant opportunities. We were able to take some time to review each of the departments, what they've received for grants in '17, what they're working on in '18, and then how we go forward and how the process actually works. It was a good meeting to actually have an idea of where we're at in grant writing and grant proposals. So, if you have more questions, please reach out.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions? Seeing none, we will move to the administration communication chief of staff, Beck. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Erica Beck, Mayor's Office. Couple of things to share with all of you this afternoon. First and foremost is, several months ago, I believe it was August, I had come before you and informed you that there were several organizations in our community that had submitted applications for funding consideration from the South Dakota Housing and Development Authority for the purpose of constructing accessible, affordable housing in Sioux Falls. And I'm happy to report that for this round of funding, the South Dakota Housing and Development Authority has awarded six projects in Sioux Falls, which is a big deal. That will equate to the construction of 130 new owner-occupied and rental homes in Sioux Falls. The recipients of those awards include Affordable Housing Solutions, which is a partner of the city of Sioux Falls, in our housing division. It also includes Four Homes for Habitat for Humanity. It includes the Roseland Heights Apartments, which are owned by St. Joseph Catholic Housing, Technology Heights Two Apartments, which will be owned by Sioux Falls Ministry Center, and the Residence at Greenway, which is owned by Affordable Housing Solutions as well. So typically, what happens in this process is that now that the awards have been made, those owners will work with the South Dakota Housing and Development Authority for close of those projects, and construction will then start in the following spring. So, come the spring of 2019, you'll start to see these projects being constructed in Sioux Falls. One additional update with respect to Planning and Development Services, Albert Schmidt, as you all know, is kind of our annexation guru, for the most part, and he will be bringing forward a proposal next week for annexation at the council meeting. And that applicant is KNN Construction, and it's annexation of approximately 23 acres of land on the corner of, southwest corner of 22nd Street and Ellis Road. All abutting property owners have been notified and invited to contact Albert in the Planning and Development Services office with questions. No questions or feedback negatively, negatively, anyway, have been received yet, but Albert will have a presentation for you all at next week's council meeting on this proposal. Parks update. City Council recently approved the contract with Proz Consulting to update the Park and Recreation System master plan. We had an opportunity this afternoon, Mayor Tenhaik and myself and TJ Nelson, to meet with Don Kearney, Tori Midama, and members of Proz Consulting to talk about that master plan, and to stress to them the importance of working with the public, and of course, all of you as stakeholders in that planning process. In January of next year, January 22nd through the 24th, they will be back here in Sioux Falls conducting focus group interviews of all, and of which all of you will be invited to participate as well. The focus group interviews are only one piece of the master planning process engagement. They will also be doing a lot of engagement with the public through various formats, including social media. So, look for more information on that in the next couple of weeks. The Parks Department will very much reach out to all of you, probably through Jim David, to get that on your schedules. And then, one more item. I had an opportunity yesterday to tour a new town home project with our housing team. It's 208 through 214 North Nesmith Avenue. So, it's just on the eastern edge of downtown, kind of straddles that downtown Whittier neighborhood border, but it's a fantastic project, and I'm really looking forward to all of you being able to see that project. This is a typical project that's funded through the Neighborhood Revitalization Program through the Housing Division, and essentially, what they do is they go in and they purchase dilapidated and/or vacant homes in a neighborhood. They demolish those homes, acquire the property, demolish the homes, and build new. And in this instance, the homes were definitely of a condition that required demolition versus rehab, and they were able to build new product in its place. On three lots, there are four new homes. Brent Tucker in the Housing Division is going to be reaching out to Jim David tomorrow to schedule a tour, or a time for all of you to tour those homes, because they're very unique, and I think that you'll find, even if you drive by them, just in that neighborhood, it's made an incredible change. And that's the, that's the purpose of that program in and of itself. So, look forward to being able to tour those homes with you. That's all I had for today.
Sounds great. Thank you. Any questions of Erica? Counselor Steely?
Thank you, Erica. I have one request. I think it might be helpful for me if you could come up with a little bullet point agenda of what you're gonna tell us on this day. I don't know if you know ahead of time, but that, it's always helpful if I have something in front of me as you're talking.
Sure.
So, let's go back to the KNN Construction Annexation. That's the first reading next week?
I believe next week is the public hearing, and then it will come forward after that with probably a month's timeframe, in which then you are all asked to vote on it after that.
So, by public hearing, what?
Sorry, first reading, public hearing.
First reading. So, we, just for the record, we've known nothing about this. We're gonna, he's gonna, Albert's gonna be up here telling us, on the first reading, why the city wants to go ahead with this, right?
Yes. He will be making a presentation that explains what the applicant is requesting, not necessarily presenting to you any sort of additional information or contact that he's had. He'll just be presenting what the application states.
And so, just, just for the record, for people to understand, during these first meeting times, historically, and I think way back till the end of time, really, is a time when we have, we'll have that information from him, but also, we have an opportunity to ask him questions, right?
I believe so.
Yes, yes. And we will have an opportunity to vet things out and to say, gee, how is this maybe gonna impact the neighbors? What will the trigger be? Is there gonna be a trigger that will possibly force other people in that area into the annexation conveyor belt, right? We can say that. So, just, I'm just making a blanket statement here, that this first reading venue is such an important thing for our community, for our council, to be able to have these discussions. If he came forth and said something to us, and we weren't allowed to ask any questions until the hearing or until the second reading, I think that would really be a disservice to our, to the due process. So, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, secondly, I'm glad you're talking about this, this study we're doing with the Park Department. Are swimming pools gonna be on the, on the agendas with that as well?
It's my understanding that they will be talking about parks facilities.
So, the focus groups are gonna be going out and meeting with people about swimming pool? I mean, is it gonna be everything in our community on the docket, or what are the specific areas they're targeting?
All of the assets within our existing park facility or our parks programming would be part of this master plan topic and discussion.
Right. So, I'm saying, like, every swimming pool in town, you're gonna be meeting with every neighborhood in that, those areas to talk about it?
I believe that what they're doing right now is establishing, excuse me, establishing what that public input needs to be in order to best address all of the various areas within our community. So, that includes users of those facilities, for example. They'll be trying to reach out utilizing surveys, written surveys, that go out in the mail, along with social media platforms to help maybe get some of those individuals to participate that aren't necessarily used to participating in a more of a traditional public engagement setting. So, they're gonna be looking at, you know, trying to utilize a lot of different formats for engaging the public and identifying, not necessarily just what needs to happen with our existing facilities, but what is the public interested in seeing five years from now, seven years from now, 10 years from now even, within our community as it relates to parks?
I understand, but are we gonna be talking about, like Drake Springs? Is that gonna have the same energy as Frank Olson is?
It's a great question. I would, I would ask that in January, when Proz Consulting comes back and starts to engage through these various stakeholder formats, that you bring that up as a concern of yours specifically with respect to Frank Olson.
Right. But I'm just wondering, before they come to town, and that we've apparently been talking with them, have they been given some information as target areas that they're gonna wanna be discussing? And I'd like to know what those areas are. If that, I would think it's not just an open-ended, any swimming pool in town, or any ball field in town. There's gonna be, there's certain targeted entities that I think we're gonna be addressing here, and I'd like to get that information as soon as possible, before we actually launch that into a full-fledged effort into those specific areas.
Erica, if you could resend the contract, because the contract does outline that. I know we were all provided a copy of that when we voted on it, and the contract does give specific guidelines as far as what they're looking at in areas. If there's additional concerns, I would encourage you-
So, it has the specific swimming pools located?
It doesn't have specific swimming pools. It gives you a guideline of what that contract is looking at, and so I would just continue to, continue to reach out and voice any concerns you have with Director Kearney.
I'm asking Erica Beck if they would specifically give me some information. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
That is fine.
That's what I'm asking for.
Get a copy of the contract to the full council, please, as well as any specifics that you're willing to provide based on that. I know that it's still open-ended, and as they do the focus groups. I participated in one of the focus groups last time. That was very meaningful. It was full of citizens. It was done at the library. I know there's other people that were involved in it, too. And it's a great time to weigh in, and really, it's just a whiteboard brainstorming. When I did it that time, I don't know how they'll do it this time, but it's a great opportunity to encourage you all to participate and make sure your voice is heard. So, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Beck? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move to City Council Open Discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor.
I do have, I attended the Convention and Visitors Bureau monthly meeting, and they had a little video that they showed that they used as part of a presentation that was made to the ASA Softball National Convention. They were able to get a tournament for Sioux Falls in 2020, the 18 and Under Girls National Fast Pitch Tournament. They showed a quick video of Sioux Falls, and normally, you see the, how many fields and restaurants, and they're usually pretty generic. This year, the CVB used a video that was a little more unique than normal at that group. I've had the pleasure in the past to go to several of their national conventions, and I had never seen anything like this. And if I could, I'd like to show the video. It's two and a half minutes. It says it's almost four on the screen, but it stops at about two and a half, 2:40. Jim's got it, Mr. David's got it loaded for us, and hopefully, the sound works, and you'll get a good feel for what they're doing on our city's behalf.
Our Dave's helping me. Thank you, Mr. Rickson.
Do you want to know the truth? It's time to make a choice. Sioux Falls has large number of lit fields, 17 agrilined lighted diamonds, perfectly groomed, over 100 practice fields. Sioux Falls is very safe. Hotels are close to the fields, within 15 minutes, more restaurants per capita than any other city. Do you want to know the truth?
What truth?
Over 700 restaurants, entertainment for the entire family, conveniently located right on the intersection of I-29 and I-90. Good-priced accommodations, 78 city parks, huge water park. Unfortunately, no one can be told what Sioux Falls is. You have to see it for yourself. This is your last chance. You take the blue pill, the story ends. You wake up in your bed and realize you made the wrong choice. You take the red pill, and you come to our land. Then I will show you how great Sioux Falls is. Remember, there is no turning back.
Let's bring the USA National Tournament to the heart of America, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Not a lot of Matrix fans in the room, I guess, by the time we're done, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other open discussion? Counselor Steely?
And I just wanted to make a comment about the resolution I brought forward last week. And I want the public to understand that when we get an idea for an ordinance or a resolution, we work closely with our staff to craft the wording and the legality of that. And I brought forth a resolution to allow the sales tax to be used as a backup in case we cannot make the payments for our new $260 million project for our wastewater treatment center. In case we fall short, I wanted to have that as the backup. But I want the public to understand that Jim David, our respected legislative research person, helped me craft that. I didn't just pull it out of the air. As he helps me with all things, he helps many of us. And also, our city attorney had to vet it. So, they signed off on it. So, it was absolutely a credible piece of legislation, and I just wanted this, the, the public and the council to understand where that came from. Thank you.
Any other open discussion? Seeing none, we will move to our first presentation, the Multicultural Center update. Kristy, the executive director, come on up. Introduce yourself, and anyone else that will be speaking, please introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Actually, I'm Carrie Moats. I am the chair of the Multicultural Center. I just wanna say thank you for allowing us to come today and give a brief presentation on the Multicultural Center. We have 19 programs and services that we offer. We just wanted to give you a little brief overview of a couple of our services that we have today. Out of the services, we have everything from children's programming, to adult education, to workforce development, and adult services, whether it's interpreting or immigration services. For our children's programming, we have a state-licensed after-school and out-of-school program. This is offered to elementary students and middle-aged students. Some of the programs that we have are Froggy Reads, Native Counts, Native Youth, Self-Defense Judo, Ethnic Youth Day, and then there is a summer care camp. All of these programs are offered for free to the public. We work with five different school districts, or five different schools here in the Sioux Falls area. We provide transportation, healthy snacks. We provide educational activities that are in line with the Sioux Falls School District's requirements. Our goal with these children's programming is to get them on track. If most of them have some English problems, English learning problems, and we are trying to help them stay on track and on course with their requirements at the South Dakota level for schooling. We currently do have a waiting list within our programs. We run six different care camps throughout the summer. Again, it's all free to the children that participate. We provide transportation, and again, snacks and stuff through those summer months as well. So, that is one of the programs that Kristy and Jay are gonna speak on a little bit today, and give you a little more information on some of the challenges and opportunities within the children's programming. The second program we're gonna talk about today is the Workforce Development Program. We work with immigrants and refugees, helping them develop resumes, fill out applications. We work with them on just basic interviewing skills. It can be just American culture, and how to get through an interview. We do mock interviews with them, and then we get them set up with the employer as well. We work with them for their first 90 days of employment to help ensure that they are gonna keep their positions. If we discover problems along the way, we help them overcome those issues so they can maintain that employment. We all know that there is an employment shortage within the city of Sioux Falls, and we believe that there is this huge workforce out there that we are just beginning to tap into. So, if we can help them get past those language barriers, get, you know, just, most of it is just simple, basic English skills that they need to get into some of these jobs. We don't have to be all doctrines and have master's degrees. So, we just wanna get them, us to utilize that workforce that is available already. So, that's the other program we'll be discussing a little bit today. So, we're gonna just go over briefly just some of the challenges and the opportunities that we see with the Multicultural Center in the city.
Wonderful. Thanks, Carrie.
Hello, Kristin Aquilias, and I have the challenge part. So, challenges that we see for our clients. One, and that we've talked about several times, we are asking that the driver's education material and test be translated into various other languages. South Dakota is one out of three states in the United States that do not provide this. Written material in other languages would make it easier for people to study. The rules and regulations, it would eliminate any potential assistance from interpreters, and would make getting a driver's license more accessible in towns that don't have interpreters of a specific language. I know the chamber's working on it. Several businesses are working on it, so it's just one of those things that provide, it's a barrier for potential employees. Two, over the years, we have an interpreter program. It's, I think they would say it's one of my babies. I've interpreted for a very long time, and our interpreters, I set very high standards for our interpreters. Just because you can speak two, three, four different languages does not mean you can become an interpreter. There are skill sets that you need to have. And so, one of the things we would like to see, and we're working on, is that South Dakota becomes a state that's certified. So, all interpreters need to be certified to interpret. Again, South Dakota is one of the few states that don't have guidelines for interpreters. Having that certification would make sure that all interpreters use best, best method standards and rules for interpreting that are found in other states. An interesting point is if you're a sign language interpreter for South Dakota, it is a misdemeanor if you don't, if you're not certified. So, I think it should be across the board for all interpreters. It also, it also gives credibility and integrity to the interpreters, to say that you're a certified interpreter. Another concern that we see with our, especially our workforce development clients, it's a barrier, is that to obtain employment during night, if they have kiddos, there's very few night childcare centers. And so, that is a problem that we, we've, we are throwing out to everyone, because we need to find some solutions. There are people who wanna work during the night. There are plenty of opportunities to work during the night. It's just, what do you do with your kiddos while you're working? So, that's one, another concern or challenge that we have. And then, the fourth, I know everyone talks about this, but it's that transportation. So, if it could go longer and wider, and then again, if there's dollars to it, and all that good stuff, too. But there are several clients, if they don't have the money to buy a car, transportation, their work that they would like to have, it's just getting them to the specific work sites. So, those are some of the major challenges we see for our clients, and, you know, we're working on those. So, I will pass it to Jay, who gets the good job about talking about opportunities.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jay Soakup, volunteer at the Multicultural Center. And there are a lot of great thing, opportunities coming up in the future for the Multicultural Center. As you all know, and as employers know across the city, there is a real shortage of workers and a shortage of skilled workers. Our Workforce Development Program is, does the job of connecting people that need jobs with people that need to fill jobs. We work hard to, to build the skill sets and connect them with employers, and to follow up once these people are hired to get them into the new job, so we have a happy worker and a happy employer. Other areas of focus we have are creating meetings between various ethnic groups, various groups across the city with law enforcement. Local law enforcement has been a longtime partner with the Multicultural Center, and with their partnership, is, we've created a real trust between many of the individual communities within Sioux Falls and the, and the law enforcement themselves. And finally, throughout the summer months, we host, we host events, one-hour events throughout the summer called Lunch and Learns, where we invite key members into the community. These key members could include anything from employers to city council members. I know a number of you have been at these events. And at these events, we take this opportunity to introduce the Multicultural Center to people who don't know a lot about us. As mentioned, we have 19 programs and services, but what we do is, we do this in a very small format, usually host about a dozen, up to about a dozen people at a time, share with them the 19 programs and services we have to offer. And what it does is, it gives us a chance to better, to better introduce these services, so we can offer interpreting services to employers, so that they can better, better hire a more diverse group of employees, also introduce them to the Workforce Development Program, which we have mentioned several times as well. And then, of course, to offer interpreting services. I believe we interpret over 40 languages right now, and there are about 150 languages spoken in Sioux Falls at this point in time. So, we like to offer these Lunch and Learn programs through the summer months, to, to basically to introduce our services to the people, to better understand what we can offer to the community. I know a number of you have attended these Lunch and Learns, and for those of you that haven't, I would invite you to, to reach out to the Multicultural Center. Get your name on the list, so we can get you on the next available Lunch and Learn. And with that, I would invite any of you to pose any questions for me, Kristy, or Carrie, about the Multicultural Center.
Thank you, Jay. Thanks for your time and your energy in volunteering to all of you, and for what you do for our community. Any questions? Counselor Steely?
A question for Kristy. And thank you so much for coming in. Tell us about right now- Tell us about right now, what kind of things are available for that nighttime childcare need?
The best that we know, there's three licensed night care centers here in town. So we definitely need more places to safely and licensed to take care of kiddos.
And, well, we had a discussion about daycare when we were, had our last board meeting, and we were talking about how it's getting more difficult for people to set up daycare centers in their homes.
Yeah. As a state licensed facility for after-school, I mean, the book's that, that thick. So for daycare, I mean, you're gonna follow similar rules. So it is, it is pretty complicated. I mean, there are a lot of things to keep a child safe. You know, the, the book could be in different languages, I know we come back to that, but even if, you know, somebody who's Hispanic, who reads Spanish, could do it and pass the license, people would feel comfortable leaving their kids there. You know, there's just a plethora of ideas we can do, it's just getting it done because the rules are very complicated and it's, it is difficult because you go through inspections and all this other stuff. It's all good to keep the kids safe, but it is complicated to get through it.
Well, and, and even during the daytime, I think there's a big need for, for daycare accessibility. And you were talking, you have forty different languages, we said that you-
We can cover right now. Yes, ma'am.
Which is kinda neat for interpretation. And then the, the transportation issue, I was wondering if, if you were gonna be at one of the, at the table as we're talking about transportation. I would think people within your group would, would be a valuable voice to say, these are the, these are the needs that we're gonna need in our transit system.
Yes. In the past, we have filled out surveys, we have asked our clients to fill out surveys. So in the past, yes, we definitely have been.
And then lastly, I don't mean to be opening up the bottom drawer here, but tell us the funding ratios that you're, that keep your organization going. Who are the, who are the participants in that?
That's kind of a plethora, eighty, about eighty-five, eighty-seven percent of our funding is grant sources. We have a great partnership with United Way, who, all that funding goes into our after-school program, Twenty First Century, again, the money goes into our after-school program, the city of Sioux Falls is an excellent partner, the county for the building, and then a ton of smaller grants. So-
And how did the fundraiser go that you just had?
Saturday was fabulous. It sounds crazy, but within forty minutes, we ran out of alcohol. We had five chefs that ran out of food, the first chef ran out of food in twenty minutes. So it was very well attended, it went, it was an excellent fundraiser for us. And it was all different foods and from different countries. So again, it's just opening up the community to come in and taste different foods and again, build that bridge of honor and respect, and this is a good thing. So-
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, Kristi, if you don't mind, I guess I'm intrigued by the, the driver's license aspect that you were talking about and the, the challenges or opportu, I call them opportunities. Are, are we limited? Is the state limited of why they can't do that, or is it just a choice that-
There were three of us that went and talked to Department of Public Service a couple years ago. And what we were told then, South Dakota is an English-only state, that's probably the biggest challenge. But also that the majority of the issues concerns, however you wish to look at it, the people who needed those different languages were in Sioux Falls. So it was more of a Sioux Falls issue. Immigrants and refugees are crossing South Dakota, it's not just a Sioux Falls issue. I know, paint on the chamber board in the chamber, Deborah, we were just talking, I mean, it is an issue, it is, you know, if you're in some of the smaller towns, you have to have a way to be able to get your driver's license. And if you know the rules, even if it's in Spanish or Kunama or Somali, if you know the rules and you can drive safely, you should be able to be, you know, you should have the opportunity so you can go to work to support your family and become self-sustaining. It, it is a, it is an issue.
It is-
Even CDLs, I mean, for, to find somebody who has a CDL is incredibly hard, and there are people who want it, but again, that's, that is a barrier for folks.
So basically, we would have to change the English-only requirements first, or that we're an English-only state in that process before that they would even move forward with the translation? So their suggestion was is that it'd be an expense for Sioux Falls rather than something to welcome all people to our state?
I think we gave them a whole bunch of different material. I, I personally think it would be fairly easy to borrow from another state. I mean, there are states that have twenty and thirty different languages already translated. We could go to Iowa, we can go to Nebraska, and there are some booklets that we can just pick up, tweak for South Dakota and use. I, I don't think it's as big of an expense as they are foreseeing, but there's always opportunities to look at how we can partner with states that surround us or even California.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we will move to our letter B, Sioux Falls Golf Update. Director Don Kearney, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Councilmembers, Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. As many of you know, we brought in a new golf course manager about the middle of January of this year, Landscapes Management Company. And so we're here before you tonight to give you a recap of how that season went in 2018. We're not completely done with 2018, but pretty well done with the golf season, obviously. So I think we'll have some good information to share with you. With us today is Justin Arlt. Justin is the Market Manager for the Sioux Falls Courses, and he'll have the majority of the presentation. But we also have Chris Jacobson, the Regional Manager for Landscapes, as well as Dustin Newman, the Transition Manager. Actually, Dustin was the first person on the ground here in Sioux Falls, along with Chris, to start the transition into the new management company and did a lot of work on the ground until they ultimately hired Justin to manage the three city courses for us here locally. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin and we'll get going.
Sounds great. Thank you. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you, Don. I appreciate it. Before we get started, what I'd like to start with is, I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't mention that 2018 was a great experience for Landscapes Management Group, being new in town. The community, the golfers were very welcoming, very supportive of what we brought and the change. More importantly, the city team, the finance team with Tom and Matt, and the Parks Team, Don and Jackie, have been great to work with, great with communication, and they've made this kind of a seamless transition that otherwise could have been difficult. So thank you for that. All right. What I'm gonna do here is basically review the steps and the things that got us in motion. I'm gonna cover the preparation for the season. I'm gonna go over some highlights for the year. I'm gonna cover some data and some performance measurements, and at the end, we'll, we'll have some questions and answers. Step one, step one of the process was basically the evaluation and set a transitional plan. And that, like Don had mentioned, was set forth with Chris Jacobson, our Golf Operations Manager, Steve Merkel, our National Agronomist, and Mark Young, our National Food and Beverage Manager. They came in, evaluated things, pinpointed what we should do, maybe some areas of opportunities, and even strong points that we wanted to continue with. After that, they placed Dustin Newman, who's also Don had mentioned, and that's, that's in attendance, in as the Transitional Manager, kind of as the in-between. And he focused a lot on staffing. As many of you know, one of the questions we might have is, is with the change, how many of the previous staff members were retained? And that number was, was almost all of them, outside of a couple that elected to, to go other directions with other opportunities. Almost all of those employees were retained. And then for Dustin, essentially, he had to get, the hardest task of all was, was the infrastructure and getting things rolling. And this is kind of an example of what we had for a transitional checklist. It's a total of two-hundred-and-five tasks that needed to be accomplished before the season started in nine different categories. And that was imperative for those things to get done so we could have success. Step two was basically the hiring of myself and, and getting me onboard at the ground level. My main focus at that point was the implementation of core, core improvements. And the first thing was basically upgrades in technology and infrastructure. We had to improve some of those areas, so that was a big, big focus. As you see some of these slides and I move through, you're gonna see that there's a recurring theme and the focus. Basically, what we wanted to do was help our, our operations be a little bit more efficient and operate a little bit more effectively, and then improve that customer experience through some of these changes. The next three slides will, will focus on some of those changes. We had online tee times, which specifically focused on the ability to have dynamic pricing. That's something that we dabbled in this year, analyzed, and next year will be a big part of our operation as we look to, to maximize our slow times and opportunities at the golf courses to increase the revenue. Another technology item that was brought in, the way of scoreboards and tournament operations, calligraphy and outdoor scoreboards are now kind of changing and becoming a thing of the past. So we, we upgraded with an event software. This really helped staff be more efficient in the tournament preparations before an event and after an event. And it also provides a better experience for the tournaments, whether it's a corporate outing, a league, or a Sioux Falls Men's Golf Club tournament. The live scoring, it works pretty slick, you've got a smartphone, it works as a scorecard, you can, you can put your score in. And not only that, you can actually get up-to-date, you can see how you fare against your competition on the golf course, real time. Another item in improvement was the equipment. That was a big, big part of it. We added, again, a lot of these things were to improve the efficiency of, of staffing and labor, but also improve the playing conditions and the playing surfaces. So we did invest in some of those items, and we do wanna make sure we, we note that we did indeed also hire a full-time mechanic, which was something new that previously wasn't done. We know that that's a priority if we're going to invest in these assets. We wanna make sure that, that they're well taken care of, not just for this year, but years down the road, as the city essentially will own those, those assets. The next step basically was improvements on customer service and our, our training. In food and beverage, we, we had a big task. We wanted to move from a self-service model to a full-service model. And we wanted to expand our menu to offer more than just your general things and items at the turn, like a hot dog and, and popcorn. We wanted to create a space where people can come out before their round of golf or stay after the golf and spend some money with us and provide a little bit better experience. So that was accomplished in the food and beverage area. In the golf side of things, a lot of it had to do with service, but what we wanted to do was bring personalized service to the table. Golf is a fun sport, it's a family sport, it's a lifestyle, young and old can play it. And for a lot of people and a lot of patrons, especially the retired folks, the golf courses become kind of a home away from home. So we wanted to make sure that we were instituting a very personalized level of service, a very open and fun atmosphere. This slide here kind of talks a little bit about the last piece of the puzzle that we feel is very important as a company. We instituted some intel, basically. It's a customer experience intel, software. And what this slide shows us is kind of data. And when anybody comes out and plays golf with us at the city golf courses, they'll get an email that says, "Thank you for playing." It'll then give them the opportunity to link and rebook with us, make an actual tee time. And then the third thing, it gives them the opportunity to give us some feedback and, and give us a survey. So this, this is an example here of the items that are on that survey. For instance, we, we put in there, we think it's, it's important, were you greeted with a smile? That's on there. Other things, like the facility, is it clean? Is it presentable? So it gives us an opportunity to get feedback so we can constantly improve. And not only that, we get information, this, this module, this intel, basically gets sent to me anytime there's a negative comment or a negative rating. It also goes to my Regional Manager, whoever sees me, as well as the President of the company. And there's actually a timetable that I have to get back to this patron and this customer and communicate with them and fix this problem. And, and then we learn. And then at the end of the month, we get this coaching report, which basically is what this is. It gives us the graphs, tells us how many people in a month, and basically tells us what their strengths are and what are, where areas of improvement need to be. So it's a great tool for us as a staff, and I can take this to my assistant golf professionals, my head golf professionals, anybody, any department, and we can try to make improvements and keep everybody on the same page moving forward. The next thing that was a big project this year was some capital improvements. We spent some time, some low-cost items that we feel have a high impact, specifically at Elmwood. These pictures will show that we put in a new wall at the, the back of the building. Previously, it was a purple divider, it was not the greatest aesthetic look. So we put a wall in, new doors, new carpet, put in a bar, new flat-screen TVs, and tried to dress up the facility so it's a little bit more appealing, not only for our patrons to enjoy, but also for corporate outings and fundraisers and different things. That's a big part. A lot of people consider not just the quality of the golf course, but the facilities for hosting an event. So we, we did a good job of, of improving those amenities. Next is kind of our highlights for the year. I'll cover those. The big one for us, we were honored to host the South Dakota Golf Association's premier event, the State Amateur, the Stroke Play. That was hosted at Elmwood with great reviews. People were very, very complimentary of the new layout and the renovations and the course conditions, and it was, it was just a great thing to see, and hopefully that will create a little buzz as people from all over the state came to play Elmwood and experience it. We've also got some pictures here that talk about some new fresh events that we created. What we wanted to do is create a learning environment, a fun environment for families, and maybe not even just golfers. So the picture on the right shows Evening on the Tee. That was a night where we got every major manufacturer on our driving range for one night, so everybody could come out and hit the latest and greatest in technology with their family and hopefully lead to sales, which it did, but more importantly, just create a little fun and, and some buzz and things of that nature. The other picture, which is kind of fun, is actually a Pilates class. We, we brought in a golf-specific Pilates instructor that spent some time with, with our patrons and gave a class, and then afterwards, we had some pints. It was, it was themed, Pints and Pilates at Prairie Green, and, and that, and that was fun. So that gives you kind of some highlights and an idea of some of the things that we brought to the table with some success this year. This slide talks about a little bit of our, our focus moving forward. We know that we've got good golf courses, good facilities at great locations, and we feel like there's an opportunity for us to drive the bottom line through non-golf events. So Sioux Falls College, actually, we hosted this fall a Hall of Fame induction ceremony, had over a hundred people in attendance at Prairie Green. The other picture was a fundraiser we did for breast cancer awareness, we did a silent auction. So we're, we're trying to push the envelope in these areas, and we're really excited to announce that in 2019 in March, we're actually gonna host our first wedding event at Prairie Green. So those areas are now spearheaded through the hiring of a new food and beverage manager, which we're excited to have, especially me, excited to have, because it's not my, my, my strong suit, but to have somebody there to spearhead that development and increase in revenue. suit, but to have somebody there to spearhead that development and increase in revenue. Next, financial performance and data. Pretty simple this year. The story this year, when it came to golf courses, whether it's in town, across the state, or in the region, had a lot to do with rounds being down. And you could see that our rounds were certainly down 17%, which falls in line with the weather and what other places experienced. The chart on the right, though, kind of tells the story in playable days. And a playable day is basically a day in which we don't have precipitation, we don't have snow, high winds. It's just an average day where we, the facility will be open and we have opportunity to have golfers. And if you look at 2017, that number of 221, that is the highest number of playable days we saw in over a decade. And in 2018, that plummeted, obviously, with the snow in the spring, followed by unseasonably wet weather in the summer and cold temperatures in the fall. 2018 actually had the worst playable days in over a decade. So, it was a challenging year for weather, thanks to Mother Nature. The positive there, though, you know, our rounds of play, if you notice there, the playable days, our rounds on playable days, actually saw a 7% increase. So, what we saw was when the weather was good, our play was actually up. We saw good traffic. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough of those days. This slide is kind of the last one in the performance and data area. It is basically the gross revenues and our operating expenses comparison from 2017 to 2018. Again, I'll note that these are actuals through October, year-to-date actuals comparing both years. Rounds, revenue, gross revenue was obviously down 7%, mainly due to the weather. But if there was a positive for us as a company and as a team, Sioux Falls Golf did see, did do a good job with operating expenses and managing the business, and we managed those to a 19% decrease, which helped us financially end up where we hope to be this year. I'll go back to this slide a little bit. And one big thing that we get asked a lot so far, especially since the Argus had an article, is, "Well, how did you end up in a fair position with so few rounds and with such bad weather?" And I think the team here would, we talked about it today, and it comes down to really three things. We did manage the business, but number one was, was we had some savings in HR and payroll. With LU, we have, for instance, a controller and accounting team that are in Lincoln that we don't necessarily have to have on property onsite here in Sioux Falls that hits the budget. So, that's one area. The other thing is buying power. Landscapes, as a national brand, has a lot of buying power with chemicals, fertilizer, food with contracts with Cisco, even golf products, merchandise through Nike. There's a lot of buying power there, and we did a really good job of making sure we hit every discount that we could to help the bottom line. And I think the last thing is the team. You know, managing that business on a daily, weekly, and monthly note. If my eyes aren't on it, my operational manager, regional, is on it, and even the transitional manager is on it. We all have our eye on the ball, and if somebody drops it, there's somebody there to pick it up and remind us of what we need to do. So, that's kind of how we got to where we were. Looking forward to 2019, we're super excited. Some changes. Number one, we changed our structure, new pricing structure. We did this so we could be more competitive in the market, and we also did it to create some value for our golfers and attract more golfers. So, all of our season passes, all of our memberships for the golf courses now are going to be 54 holes. They're not just going to be able to choose one or two. We're going to encompass everything. So, all 54 holes and three practice facilities will be a part of that. We also added a member advantage program. So, now all of our memberships are going to get access to the Landscapes management portfolio of golf courses, eight regional golf courses and 30 national golf courses. Some of them are public that are going to give us an opportunity for a discount. Some of them are private, high-end private clubs, and we're just going to get access at standard guest rates, which is still a great, again, great experience for some of our, for our passholders. And now, we've also added some partners in fitness, and we're going to continue to look at adding partners. We've partnered with Orange Theory, Club Pilates, Nine Round Kickboxing, and Golf Addiction to offer 20, 30% off their products and their services just for being a member with us at Sioux Falls Golf. So, we're excited about this model, and we look to add more of those partnerships. That, in a nutshell, is everything. I did pretty well. I was worried that I can be long-winded. Can I answer any questions from you?
Thank you, Justin, for your presentation. We'll turn it over to the council. Counselor Seober.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Justin, for being here, you and your team. Yeah, I was tickled to see kind of the, a little bit of this story here, I think it was in the Argus a week or two ago, to get this started. I mean, after all the events and meetings and work, and yes, a little bit of drama that went into the hiring and starting with this, I kind of thought, "Oh, boy." Now, you're starting off behind the eight ball and top of everything else with basically spring being wiped out. There wasn't much, as you said, of an April, and fall wasn't much better. So, to see these numbers, I mean, 17 less rounds played, 55 less playable days, and yet you still came pretty close to being about even when, I think, if I read some of the numbers correctly, the October projected is about $200,000 ahead of what it was last year and 250 ahead of the year before. That's pretty impressive stuff. And I also, I know it was very important for some of us that were on the, kind of the group that was part of recommending you being hired, and one of the things that was important with this is that you would tie in as much of the team that was here before to combine your expertise and knowledge with the folks that were here. And I think you did an excellent job of that, too, so that really makes me happy as well. I guess the only question I might have, I mean, on some of these numbers, and I think you touched on this a bit, but like, when you talk about your operating expenses, I mean, $425,000 down from last year. Can you maybe just highlight again, what were the biggest keys to that?
Absolutely. I think the biggest key there was on the agronomy side. There was a lot of savings in fertilizer, chemical, payroll. Staff did a very good job of calling off our hourly staff. When there was a day that, and there was, unfortunately, there was a lot of days where it was going to be obvious that, according to the forecast, there wasn't going to be a big need, or maybe even it wasn't feasible to get a heavy roughmoor out to rough, to mow the rough. We called off. We called off the staff in advance. So, most of those savings that you see are in that expense with the golf courses. And again, that's Landscapes, the team, that's their forte, right? They started with construction and renovation, and Steve Merkel and Jake, they did a great job in that, in that realm.
Okay. Well, congratulations on a good start. I can't wait to see what you guys can do with a little more workable weather, and it sounds like you got some new programs coming alongside, too. So, congratulations. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Justin, tell me a little bit about the dynamic pricing system that you're proposing of taking advantages of slower times and the busier times. So, the rates will go up on busy days and down on the slower, or how do you see that working?
Yeah, let me clarify that. So, what we have essentially is what we call a rack rate. That's the standard rate. Those are peak times, most popular times. And so, with our POS system that's mapped into our online reservation system, it has the technology that it can track, and it will tell us opportune times that maybe aren't as busy. And we can get in and we can actually change that price. We can be proactive. So, for instance, we know, example, as we observed this year, our, we're very busy in the mornings, from 6:30 in the morning until about 12:30, and then we're very slow from about 12:30 to 2:30 until our twilight rate kicks in. So, online with that dynamic pricing, what that, what we would then do is that slow time, we would lower our rates. We would actually have them be a little bit more affordable because it's wasted revenue. We would rather have somebody come out at that time and pay $25 versus not playing at all. So, that's kind of the engine of it.
Okay. One of my, when I was starting to dig into this, I was trying to, I had a constituent ask me, you know, "What does a city go, what's the hole in? What did we spend on managing golf courses?" When we were looking at that. And when you look at the budget, I was looking down that there is, the city, there's a separate line item for the city operating support. So, when you put in, that the city put into the operating account that we now own and that we do that, we put in 600, almost $630,000. Part of that was our already existing money, but we've put in $300,000 to operate the course. And the thing that stood out to me is the number that was reported. I think our media does a good job of reporting the net operating loss of $41,000, but there were other things that weren't included in that as part of the loss for the year. And when I look at what I got from the finance office, the number's probably closer to $113,000. But I guess my overall concern moving forward, how, what should we expect? I know we budgeted putting in another $100,000 for 2019, but how do we continue to support the course? Do we see this getting closer to break even? I know when you go back in history, there was a time when the courses were producing a net revenue of almost a half a million dollars. And so, I guess, one thing, as I babble through this, I'm having a hard time justifying looking at numbers compared to just 2017 because we still weren't fully operational. So, just comparing to 17 gives us a, I hate to say a rosier picture of how things turned out in 18, but it probably gives us a, maybe a false sense of where we were at just comparing to what we did when the course wasn't yet fully operational. So, give me an idea how we budget as we move forward and what you forecast that we're going to be when we get to 20 and 21, you know, if we need to continue to add that $100,000 plus, but...
Very good observations, good questions. You're right. When you compare 17 to 18, it's not apples to apples. There's a lot of different variables. There's depreciation. There's a lot of changes from one contract to the other. For instance, the previous management company owned the equipment. In this situation, they do not. Landscapes does not. The city does. So, that $629,000 that you're referencing, over 300 of that was basically assets, you know, the building and furniture and shop merchandise and the transfer equipment, so on and so forth. So, I wanted to mention that. But to answer your question, as a team, what we feel like, you're absolutely right. We don't want to break even. We don't want to lose money. We weren't happy with this year. We feel like if the weather was good, the playable days were good, we could have met our budget. And our budget is to make money. This year, it was $209,000. Next year, 2019, we're budgeting for $235,000 worth of profit. And we honestly feel like this year, what we did was we built kind of the foundation. And next year, with some weather, we should be able to see some revenues from that. We're pretty confident that even though we're managing the expenses well, that as we've implemented these things and we gain momentum, that we can get back to the point where we're not just breaking even, we're making money. And I would say, as a management company, my manager would say, "There's nothing in it for us unless we do." We're incentivized as a the company. If we make $200,000, I believe that equates to about $20,000 for the company, right?
11%.
Right, 11%. So, you know, yes, ultimately, we are aggressive with our budgets. We feel confident that we'll get there.
One of the places that I was, when I was digging through the numbers, that kind of stood out to me a little bit is, yeah, we looked at playable days, but the number of season passes were down about 25%. Do you think there was some fallout from changing management companies? Do you think that, I'm having a hard time justifying that as all-weather related or what's going on in the marketplace?
Very good question. We studied that a little bit, and part of it probably was the change. Our staff that was retained came to us and said, "You know, there's some people that normally play that, you know, they're just going to wait it out this year. They're going to observe what it's all about and make a decision for next year." So, yes, you know, that hurt a little bit, if we're honest. But I can't stress enough that the entire, the season, the selling season, for us is when golf season starts. And golf season started in May instead of March and April. So, golfers are smart. They did the math. They said, "Okay, listen, I'm going to do a $1,000 season pass." Well, wait a minute. I just lost 30 days, 45 days. Well, and one of the things that we have is a punch pass, which is another offering. So, a lot of those folks elected to not do a season pass and actually did a punch pass. Our punch passes were up because of it. So, to answer your question, a little bit of it was the change, but primarily, people did the math on the playable days in the season.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Staley?
Justin, heralding back to a comment you made about cost savings, you inferred that now, the, tell me if I heard this right, your personnel payroll departments are being held, are being handled out of Lincoln, Nebraska? Is that right?
Correct.
So, did, who was handling that before?
So, previously, there was a controller and some part-time accounting folks. And with our team in Lincoln, we have an accountant and we have a controller in that team in Lincoln, so they house our courses under that bonnet with other golf courses.
So, that, those people were let go?
They weren't actually let go. We offered to keep the one individual on in a different capacity, a different role, so to speak, and she elected to go elsewhere with another opportunity.
Okay. And then, and I'm not a golfer, so I don't know the terminology. Maybe Counselor Starr had that. But I was just going to say, comparing memberships from 2017 to 2018, do you have a number for the memberships? Maybe it was here and I missed it.
Memberships were indeed down close to 20%, yes.
Do you have the number?
I don't have the exact off the top of my head, but I'd be more than happy to get it to you, yes.
Yeah, that would be, and I agree with what Counselor Starr said about comparing, you know, year to year, that we want to maybe go back to the year, well, back when we weren't doing the renovations of the courses. And the number, one of the things that struck me in the midst of this, and I wouldn't have called it a drama last year, I would call it community involvement, that we were listening to the community, there were, of course, concerns, and that's good government, is when we're listening and involving people in this very important decision that we made. But one of the things, I think that we were paying you a management fee of like $76,000. Am I remembering that correct?
Correct. The management's fee is $75,000, and that is included in the financials. That's listed as an expense budgetarily.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. So, if you, yeah, just give me those numbers, I would, as far as the memberships, I'd appreciate it. And the day, you said your day passes are up. Is that what you said? Or the day passes apparently went up from the year before?
Correct, the punch passes, which is kind of like a prepaid gift card for an amount that you choose for golf cart and green fees.
Okay.
So, just another option, but I'll definitely send that to you.
I got one more question. These high schools, the kids that are playing golf, what courses are they using?
That's a good question. We actually have all of the city golf course programs at our courses as well as O'Gorman. So, they play, pay a minimal fee for each team, and that includes the spring and the fall season. So, currently, all of them, last year anyway, utilize the three city courses as their practice facilities. Next year, I've spoken to the ADs, they are all going to continue, with the exception of, I believe it's Washington, may consider a different golf course just to proximity and convenience. But, yeah, that's one thing that we have, feel is very important to continue as a city, city golf courses, to support those programs for our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that the punch pass is very similar to what we do at our indoor aquatic center. We do a similar punch pass to get in. You can buy those as well, so it's very common at some of our other... So it's very common at some of our other perks facilities. Councilor Nightert.
Yeah, I just have one question and it was a little note under your staff positions. It mentions, and new year-round employment. Ismar, can you just tell me what the employment model was prior, maybe it was seasonal and what you're doing now and how that differs and everything?
Yes, yes, good question. That pertains to the assistant golf professionals. Previously, the assistant golf professionals were not year-round employees. We feel it's very important as a company to have those folks be year-round. There's many things in the off-season that we can get them to do that are going to pay dividends when we are open. It's also much, much easier to keep and retain and attract talent when you have a year-round position that has benefits. So to answer your question, that noted, our assistant golf professionals were moved into a year-round employment.
At the risk of sounding dumb, not being a golfer, what does a golf professional do?
Well, a golf professional, what most people assume a golf professional does, and this is what my friends, friends tell me, they assume that you fold polos and you answer the phone when it rings. And those are certainly things that are a part of the job, but it's far more. The other assumption is that it's teaching and managing staff. But a golf professional wears many hats. They're going to observe the customer service inside and outside. They're going to manage leagues, they're going to manage tournaments, corporate outings, the retail side of things with merchandising, with apparel and equipment, going to fit golf clubs, junior golf. Our staff runs a junior golf academy for instruction, but also runs a tournament schedule, Sioux Falls Junior Golf Tour, so they run those tours. It's quite the job. I can tell you, as working my way up, to be an assistant golf professional, you wear a lot of hats and you work really hard.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilor Kylie.
Thank you. You'd mentioned your season passes, which I believe is what Councilor Staley is referring to as memberships.
Correct.
Your season passes are down about 20%, but did you track the number of those former season pass owners that purchased punch cards or just simply paid as they played? Did you track that at all or is there, was there a way to track?
There was not a specific way for us to track it, other than our team of professionals that have been longstanding, just because we did change POS systems. We moved from an old system into a new system. So there was real no way, really no way for us to tangibly track that. However, moving forward, now that we've got the new system in place, that is something that we're going to do.
Okay. And I do agree that it is difficult to compare 2018 with 2017 or even going back to, let's say, 2013 or whenever it was that we started construction on the golf course because there are so many different variables that are in play. And the game of golf has changed significantly as well, too, in terms of participation and interest. I really do think a key factor here is the attention that you appear to be paying to customer satisfaction and the surveys that you offer each individual after every round. And that, it is offered after every round, even for your pass holders or punch cards versus pay as you play?
Correct. We can set it up. I believe we have it set up right now because we do have people that play every day and it would be annoying. So we have it set up every two weeks. So if you're a patron that plays often, you're going to get the opportunity to give feedback once every two weeks. And we can modify that, definitely. But like you had said, to touch on what you had mentioned, for us, a lot of it has to do with the experience. We want to improve the experience because we feel like if we're improving the experience, we may draw more customers and that in itself is going to help the bottom line. That means more green fee players are going to come visit our golf courses or more people will join. So we want to get to a captive audience. We want, one of the things that I've mentioned, and I'm probably going overboard, but one of the things that we want to do is get younger. Right now, our season pass holders, our average age is over 55. We want to get younger. We want to, our competition has that market. And so we want to offer unique events and leagues and things that may spark their interest. And one of the things that we're excited about that I didn't mention in 2019 is we've created a young executive membership that's 40 and under, that is priced very, very competitively because we know we want to get to that point where we have more 35 and 40-year-olds coming out to play the city golf courses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I appreciate you being here, Justin. I do have a question for Don Kearney. I think all my questions were answered. So Don, I just want to, and I guess I could ask this of Justin as well, but my question is if you could just touch very briefly on just the management contract and the relationship between the two, not the details of the contract, but just the oversight, the accountability between the two, how often you're communicating, just so this isn't just, hey, go out and manage our golf courses and do great things and come to the city council on an annual basis. Talk to me a little bit about that relationship.
Well, thanks for asking that question. I don't know if Justin shares the same sentiments or not, but I've gotten to know him probably a little more than I care to, to be honest with you. We meet regularly. We have bi-weekly meetings set up, not only with Justin, but Jake, Chris Jacobson, we also have Dustin Newman on the phone, Tom Everett in Lincoln, and there are other, whole team of landscape management professionals are on those conference calls, on those bi-weekly conference calls. Jackie also sits in there and is kind of an assist to me to be able to monitor what's going on there. Jackie also is monitoring the contract for us and our checklist and telling Justin, hey, this is coming up, this is due, knowing that this is a new relationship and trying to make sure we get off on the right foot. But yeah, it's been some seriously active engagement on a variety of different fronts and LU has been all-in on this thing. They've been very responsive to any concerns or questions we've had. And they, too, have also reached, leaned on us, I think, a little bit to try to understand how the city wants their courses run and what's expected from our perspective because it is an asset of the cities and it's a reflection on our department as well. So it's very engaged, is what I'd say.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that. Seeing no other questions, we'll turn it over to public input. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on either of the topics that were presented today? Seeing none, thank you. Councilor Kylie, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move that we make the motion to move into executive session to discuss the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public official or officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor. This is South Dakota Codified Law 125-21.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Breckie.
Yes.
Eriksen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
That passes each zero. We will go into executive session. If we could please clear the room, we will start our session in.
Good.